Hey Lauren, I think we're picking up audio, is that on the City of Kattati microphone? Good evening everyone and welcome to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on this Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. And I will turn it over to our city clerk and ask that you call a roll call, please.
Councilmember Deloso.
Here.
Councilmember Purvey.
I believe she's on the outside list, she needs to be promoted.
Oh, thank you, just one second. Councilmember Harvey.
Here, sorry my link wasn't working, I had to come in the other way, thank you for putting me back in as chairman.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Present, good evening.
Mayor Skilman. Here, thank you so much. Alright now, if you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, thank you. Now I'll move to item number four, approval of minutes and notice of waiving and reading of all resolutions and ordinances. That was from our regular meeting of August 11th, 2020.
I'll move to approve, it's Councilmember Deloso.
This is Councilmember Harvey, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. Okay, thank you, so now we will, we move on to item number five, for announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services of variety of recreation programs for all ages and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle, that's N-I-X-L-E dot com, or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, where we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, excuse me, as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 a.m. since 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. And like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611 and of course if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. Now I'll move to item six, we've got two proclamations today. The first one is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati recognizing Bike to Wherever Day is 2020. And I understand we have Eris Weaver on the line to accept this proclamation. So I will go through first and just read all of the whereas's and then I can see if Ms. Weaver would like to say a few things. Alright, so, whereas, the bicycle is a healthy, convenient, financially and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Kattati's scenic beauty, local attraction, and friendly neighborhoods. And, whereas Kattati's roads and trails attract bicyclists year-round, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Kattati, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student health and learning, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic and shelter-in-place orders have resulted in a large increase in the number of Kattati residents riding bicycles. And whereas the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, the League of American Bicyclists, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area will be promoting bicycling during the month of September 2020. And whereas, throughout the month of September, the residents of Kattati and its visitors can experience the joys of bicycling through free educational programs, team bike challenges, and virtual events organized by these groups. And whereas, these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Kattati does hereby proclaim September 2020 as Bike to Wherever Month and September 24, 2020 as Bike to Wherever Day in Kattati, and urge all residents to participate in this special observance. So I'll see if Ms. Weaver would like to say a few words. It's okay if you don't, just let me know.
Oh, when have you ever seen me turn down an opportunity? Alright, thank you Mayor Skilman, and thank you to the whole council for this. You know, things have been so crazy over these last six months between COVID and fires and all of that and, but this weird little silver lining has been, how many more people have been out on bicycles? All of our local bike shops are running out of bikes, it's a two-week wait to get your bike tuned up, and everywhere I go, I just see more and more people out having fun with their families on bikes. And so while we were very heartbroken in May when Bike to Work Day had to be canceled because of the shelter-in-place orders, this sort of reframing, rescheduling, rebranding into Bike to Wherever Days now in September has given us an opportunity to think about how to do all of that differently. I don't know how many of you might even know this, but actually my first introduction to Bike to Work Day and to the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition was actually years ago when my friend, neighbor, and our former planning commissioner Ben Ford was organizing the downtown Kattati Bike to Work Day station and roped me and some other folks into volunteering there. So that was sort of the beginning of my involvement with all of this quite some time ago now. And we have really appreciated how much the city has done and partnered with us around Bike to Work Day and other friendly things. I don't know if I have told you all how much I am loving the new wayfinding signs and every other jurisdiction in the county that I go to, I'm talking them up and telling them, "You need to have those too" at all of your bike paths, so people know where they are. So some of the things that we have going on, and folks can find a full list of everything at our website at bikesonoma.org. We are offering all of our smart cycling bike safety classes and our family bike workshops for free over Zoom, and so the full calendar of that is there. We also have a couple of bike maintenance workshops we're doing. And tomorrow night's smart cycling class is actually gonna have ASL interpretation for the deaf included in that session. We have our usual month-long challenge where folks can make teams and compete for who does the most miles or bikes the most days, and have prizes for that. We've also created a month-long bike-themed scavenger hunt with lots of activities and things to do that people can participate in as a family, as a team, as an individual. We still have those 800 bags that are gonna show up and we're working with our different community partners to, throughout that week of Bike to Work Day, giving them out at bike shops or other places where we're in conversation with Oliver's and some other places. We don't have the exact thing nailed down yet, but that will also be on the website for sure, where people can go to get their bags during that week. And then we have a lot of other sort of do-it-yourself virtual ideas of fun things people can do to celebrate cycling. So for example, some of my friends, you know, I had a little impromptu lit-up bike parade through town a couple nights ago, if anybody wondered what a bunch of flashing lights on bikes zooming around was doing. So again, I just wanted to thank all of you, invite anyone who hasn't yet, go take a look at bikesonoma.org for the list of all the different things you can do to both learn how to be safer on your bike and ways to have fun and even though we have to do all of this virtually. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you for that information about your organization. And now, we'll move on to the second proclamation. My understanding is we've got Serena Consulter on the line and I was told, did you want to do a presentation before? Oh, sorry, hang on just a moment, before I move on, I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up, my apologies.
Thank you Mayor Skilman, I wasn't sure if this was an appropriate time to make a comment regarding the bicycle proclamation.
Sure, go ahead.
Eris, I just wanted to thank you for your engagement in community and doing something that's really positive and helpful for the people out there. I think it's fantastic that it's all-inclusive and I really want to just commend you for doing those positive things and helping to bring the community together, so thank you.
Alright, thank you Vice Mayor Moore. Thank you very much Vice Mayor Moore. And now I will check in with Serena Consulter. If you, my understanding is you were gonna do a presentation before the proclamation, is that correct?
I would be happy to do the presentation either before or after the proclamation, either way is fine.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and we'll switch over the screen?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Hi everyone, my name is Serena, I'm a programs coordinator at Daily Acts. I put together a really quick slideshow to demonstrate some of the photos from our creek cleanup last year and to show you guys what we have going on for this year. Want changing the slide? Perfect, so really quick before we get started, for those of you who don't know us, Daily Acts is a holistic education nonprofit that takes a part-centered approach to inspiring transformative actions that create connected, equitable, and climate-resilient communities. We believe in the power of our daily actions to reconnect people to self, community, and place, which helps heal our society and our planet. We spread solutions and models to offer the skills, tools, and resources to conserve resources while growing food, medicine, habitat, and community. Because change happens through mindful collaboration, we also invest in strengthening community leadership by equipping leaders who understand the interrelations of social, economic, and environmental justice issues through our networks, alliances, and leadership programs. These efforts consolidate into building public and political wealth by mobilizing our community's power towards environmental, climate justice policy. So last year we had a fantastic turnout for Creek Week in 2019. As you can see, those were some nice old bins, you can go ahead to the next slide. We had 16 participants in total and we actually managed to collect 250 gallons of trash, which I think is the most we've ever done during a Creek Week cleanup collaboration. 192 gallons of that was all landfill material, 48 gallons of it was recycling, and 10 gallons of it was compostable, which made it a really unique opportunity to sort it all out and kind of figure out which stuff belongs where with all of the kids and the family participants who were there. Families were also able to observe firsthand the types of trash that end up in our local waterways from everyday life, such as one-time-use plastics and food wrappers, which we found to be most common during that cleanup. Just wanted to show a few more photos, I see John Deloso in there. We had a couple of City of Kattati staff show up, which was fantastic. It was a really great event and a great turnout. I wanted to let you guys know what we have going on this year. Due to the fact that a lot of people are still pretty hesitant to go to in-person events, we decided to make this year's event Go on Your Own Creek Week Cleanup, and we made it into a webinar. So upon signing up, families or individuals will receive a scavenger hunt list and a list of observations that they can fill out and submit to me before the day of the webinar on September 24th. And then on the day of the webinar, I'm gonna do a really interactive, kid-friendly webinar that goes over watershed health, what a watershed is, how to properly sort your trash, with a guessing game, and then there'll actually be a show-and-tell opportunity as well. So anyone who submits photos or their scavenger hunts to me, I'm gonna create an interactive map, so everybody can see where Creek Week cleanups took place this year and what was found, so we can make some observations like we did last year together as a group. I wanted to end with this quote because it's really central to the work that we do. "It's never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. We are so grateful for our relationship with the City of Kattati and to do this work together, so thank you so much for supporting us."
Absolutely, thank you for that presentation. And so now I will read through the proclamation. Whereas, throughout the United States, the week starting on the 3rd Monday of September is recognized as National Pollution Prevention Week. And whereas, throughout much of California, including the Russian River watershed, cities, counties, and other stewardship organizations are recognizing the 3rd week of September as Creek Week. And whereas, our pollution prevention practices are intrinsically linked to the health of our watershed lands and waterways. And whereas, the Russian River Watershed Association supports programs to reduce pollution, increase the environmental quality of our watershed, and provide our communities with the knowledge to be effective stewards of the Russian River watershed lands and waterways. And whereas, the nearly 1,500 square miles of land, 150 creeks, and approximately 350,000 residents of the Russian River watershed are connected and mutually support each other. And whereas, the Russian River, along with its tributaries and associated features, are important resources to the people of Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. And whereas, pollution in the form of trash and debris, chemicals from industry and everyday living, and sediment from construction, and many land uses and activities all have the potential to degrade the quality of life and the quality of resources within the Russian River watershed. And whereas, the Russian River Watershed Association strives to protect our lands and waterways through ongoing pollution prevention outreach, which aims to raise awareness of the harmful effects of pollutants to our natural system. And whereas, during the Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week, creek, river, and ocean cleanups campaigns will take place throughout Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 8th day of September 2020 by the City Council of the City of Kattati that the week of September 21st through 27th, 2020 is Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week in the Russian River watershed, and asks all members of our community to support efforts to protect and enrich our watershed health by participating in the many Pollution Prevention Week, Creek Week activities, and to take active steps to reduce pollution and care for our environment throughout the year. So Serena, thank you very much for your presentation and we will of course get you a more official proclamation in the mail soon.
Thank you so much, Wendy.
Thank you, and take care out there. Okay, so now we'll move on to item number seven. Let me see that I don't sniff, okay, there we go. Making sure there were no hands up before I moved on this time. I would move on to approval of the final agenda. I'll check in with our city manager, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Thank you Mayor, no proposed changes.
Okay, perfect. Then we will move on to item number eight, citizens' business and public comment for consent counter items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lauren Bridges to check in and see if there's anybody who wants to make public comment.
Thank you Mayor Skilman, and just as a reminder to our attendees that to make a public comment, use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial star nine if you're using just your telephone. Listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number and audible Zoom notification that you've been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. Laurie Alderman, go ahead.
I would like to request disciplinary actions be taken against any city staff member or council member who concealed the feasibility study started in March for the upcoming add-on tax measure, which is measure continuation of Measure G and now called Measure S, both from the citizens and from the county judge who had specifically asked in his order for the city to show cause why the ballot wording was not misleading. He specifically had asked for the sources of the ballot wording. This concealment was unethical and should have consequences. In the July agenda packet, this feasibility study, paid by our tax dollars, was not included in the staff report or in the community's survey results. Only the public comments from the results were. We citizens all, I'm sorry, and a county judge on, in this situation deserve much better transparency and others' transparency in such matters. You need to play fair, and you're not even playing fair in court. You send 500 pages to confuse the judge, and you omit, omit, omit. And that is wrong. And to set up this for months and months and to then conceal it is dishonest and tapes will forever tape Measure S. Please, other citizens, please make sure to read the voter information ballot that has both sides on this issue. Thank you.
Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name's Adrian Lobby. I live at Number One Kingston Way in Cattati. This morning, I walked out on my back door, and I saw a red sun and an orange sky. It was eerie. It was creepy. And it reminded me of the urgent need to make urgent changes. And climate change, obviously, and the fires are on everybody's mind. But I don't even need that to have a sense of urgency because I hear about the murders of black and brown people and the rise of some kind of right-wing armed groups who are wanting to come into Portland, who showed up in front of the Kentucky Derby, and physically threatening protesters who are just, you know, making their feelings known. In Salt Lake City, a 13-year-old kid with autism was shot by a cop after his mother called for help because he was having a meltdown. There was no weapons involved. And I know that all of you and all of us think and hope that this will never happen in Cattati, that our police are trained better, are kinder, gentler people, who are more cautious. And maybe that's true. But we had something like this happen in Roanoke Park not that long ago. And the urgency is to do something before someone is really seriously hurt or killed. I work with CORE, the Cattati Organized Against Racism. We had a wonderful meeting with Manager Obit this week, talking about a survey of all of the citizens. And I want to commend him for being really open-minded and thoughtful about how he's going around this. And I really appreciate being brought in at a time when we can give honest and realistic input. I want to urge the rest of you, and I guess backing up to say, Manager Obit is doing research on some of the other things that CORE has asked you to take up. But we need you all, you all city council members, to also do the research, to also reach out, to set up your ad hoc committee, your working group. Really, you know, the days go on, and it just feels like another day in coronavirus, COVID. Fire, hell. It's all very routine. But the truth is, the days are going on, and we need to take action. We need to get something going here, and we really need to do it quickly. So, thank you for listening to me, and I hope we can see some great action very soon.
Marjorie Crumpshires, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. I'm Marjorie Crumpshires. I live on Mattery Circle here in Cattati. I echo what Adrian has said just before me. And I especially want to comment on the meeting that she and I had with Damian to talk about a survey or polling mechanism that looks at any issues of racism that citizens in our community may have encountered. That meeting was very transparent, was very upfront.
Marjorie, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you turn off the, can you mute whatever's going on in the background? Because we're hearing you twice with a slight delay.
That. And I've been struggling. I'm so sorry. I am not technically savvy with regards to this. If someone can direct me, or maybe I should talk later and work on getting that turned off. I just, I'm going to have to do some stuff.
Okay, yeah, just raise your hand again, and then we'll come back to you. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Kaitlin Wiley?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, Ms. Okay, my name is Kaitlin. I am also with CORE, Cattati Organized Against Racism. And I want to talk tonight about fire season. All we have to do is look out our window to know that, you know, we're in it. And so it's not unlikely that Cattati is going to end up in a disaster response situation sometime soon. And so I would like to talk about us as a city crafting a disaster response that includes the needs of immigrants and non-English speakers. There's actually an incredibly comprehensive and useful report already created by North Bay Organizing Project. It's called Recommendations for Sonoma County Disaster Planning proposed by the Spanish-speaking community. And it includes 28 recommendations aimed at the county. But I think those recommendations are also very useful on a city level for considering honestly not even that difficult or enormous shifts in the way that we respond to a disaster that could drastically, be drastically more inclusive for non-English-speaking immigrant communities. So, there are 28 recommendations. Obviously, you don't have time and not going to run through all of them. But I have a few here that I want to walk through just to give you kind of a taste of what's in this report. Number one, all alerts will be multilingual, including information in both English and Spanish, as well as languages spoken in the county, including indigenous languages like Mixteco, Creque, and Chetino. Two, official trained translators will be present at all local assistance centers paid by the county. They will wear vests or T-shirts and name tags that clearly designate which languages they speak so they can be easily identified. Three, no one will ask about immigration status. Signs will be posted stating that no one will ask about country of birth. And obviously, those signs should be in multiple languages. Four, food native to Spanish-speaking communities will be included in meals provided at the centers, possibly by utilizing volunteer cook. And five, as people wait for assistance, someone will specifically welcome them and clearly inform them of their rights, though the county is not collaborating with ICE. The information provided while registering for assistance will not be shared with ICE. That police officers and military personnel are only present to provide assistance. And then the last one I have here is that county personnel will make a proactive effort to involve all media outlets in disseminating information. So, that includes, of course, non-English-speaking outlets. These are just some examples of the 28 recommendations they have. It's a really wonderful, comprehensive list. And so I urge any member of the city council to read the full report as you're discussing plans for action for future disaster response. And again, that report is called Recommendations for Sonoma County Disaster Planning proposed by the Spanish-speaking community. And you can find it on the North Bay Organizing Project website. Thank you.
Laura Sparks, go ahead.
Hello. I just wanted to speak briefly on the same topic that Adrian spoke on, and I wanted to thank her for her comments and just reiterate what she said. I was very hopeful that perhaps at some point in the near future we can have an agenda item placed on the city council agenda of creating an ad hoc committee that would include members of the public and stakeholders in looking at issues around racism and policing in Cattati. I'm really grateful for how much we've been, the Cattati Organized Against Racism has been included. And especially with the meeting with Marjorie and Adrian when they were able to meet with Damian. So, I'm really grateful for that. Thank you. I would like to see us involved in a more formal way. There's so much energy and so many really talented and really knowledgeable people who are working on studying these things. And I would love for the city to be able to take advantage of all of that energy and engagement that's happening by including us a little bit more formally. So, I'm asking that you place on the agenda in a future meeting a discussion about creating an ad hoc working group or committee, however the best way to do it is, to work on issues related to policing. So, thank you.
Marjorie, go ahead. Marjorie Crumpshires?
Looks like she's still muted.
Oh, there she goes. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I'll repeat what I just said. Both Laura and Adrian have shared what my comments were going to be. But I'm going to say them again. One, Damian, thank you for being open with us in our meeting and inclusive. Thank you for realizing that we, this is urgent, that we, it is time to move, and for being willing to at least meet us halfway. We are wanting to do as much as we can to support the work of our city government and our city manager and our police chief. And we are always wanting to be a part of input and decisions. We've done a lot of work and a lot of research. So, thank you for including us thus far. We want to continue to be included. The working committee that Laura talked about is also very important to us. And we appreciate knowing that this is being explored and that we will be a part of that exploration. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Mayor Skilman, back to you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your public comments. And my apologies again, Marjorie. I just really didn't want the echo in the background to distract from what you had to say. So, I'm glad you were able to fix that audio. So, now we will move on to the consent calendar. We have one item.
Mayor Skilman, this is Councilmember Deloso. I would move to approve item A on the consent calendar.
And Mayor Skilman, this is Councilmember Lammon. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those, oh, sorry. I'm so used to that old routine. I keep hanging on to it. Can we please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to item 10, direction on future agenda items. So, I will pause and see if there are any council members. So, yes, Councilmember Deloso, yours was the first hand I saw. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Skilman. As it was brought up certainly at this meeting and at a prior meeting, I would like to bring back and have a public discussion about some type, I don't know what to call it, but we'll just go with ad hoc for now, group that would potentially include citizens, police staff, maybe the other city hall staff, maybe a council member, maybe two. And I mean, I have a lot of unanswered questions at this point. I'm looking, you know, to find out what would be the intent and purpose of having such a committee. So, I think having that level of discussion first before we agree or disagree to do it, I mean, I would like to have that looked at. And I'd like the focus to be on, certainly on racism, regardless of whether it's prevalent or not here. I don't believe it is, but regardless of that. So, I think I would like to see that come to a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then I see Councilmember Harvey. Go ahead.
Yes, along the same lines, I guess my thought is that I think this keeps coming up, and I think it would be a well-received, let's see, conversation that we should have. And maybe it should be put forth on the next community meeting we have to kind of shape what that would look like so that we can really kind of work out the details before we actually assign people to it. So, it seems like that would be a good item on our next community meeting. And along with that, I was going to ask if we could narrow down when our next community meeting might be. I don't want to lose sight of the momentum that we have on this. So, I'm hoping that it will be, you know, sooner rather than later, and that we can at least get some idea of when that might be so that we can, you know, let everybody be prepared for that. So, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, Mayor, just really quickly, just to jump in. We are, we are doing a lot of work, a lot of research based on the last community meeting. And I do expect that the last week, September 1st, week of October is the timeframe. We'll nail that down fairly soon to come back and resume the discussion that we started prior to community meeting.
Okay, great. So, Councilmember Harvey, go ahead.
Sorry. And Damian, do you see the possibility of us including what something, a committee might look like? That we could kind of ferret that out a little bit possibly in that meeting?
Sure, yeah. So, I'll explore options, and we can have the conversation to get there.
I think it would be a worthwhile discussion with everyone so that kind of we're all on the same page, and we're not, you know, you're thinking one thing, and we're thinking another thing, and the CORE group is thinking something else. I think it would be worthwhile to have that discussion. I think it would be worthwhile to have that discussion.
Okay, and then I was supposed, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Lammon. I saw your hand go up.
Thank you, we're thinking the same thing. Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Yeah, I was just going to say, I believe what my colleague, Councilmember Harvey, was saying. We have a long planned public meeting and we'll discuss and kind of catch up and see where we're at vis a vis what ongoing changes have been made, what ones are happening, which ones do we perhaps need to be made. I think after that discussion might be the prudent time then to actually stop and take a breath and see, do we believe we want or indeed need an ongoing committee after that? So I'd like to suggest that's a conversation that perhaps briefly begins at the end of that next meeting. But I think actually trying to describe it and find a charter for it at this time is kind of difficult because what it is or might be or might not even need to be depends a lot on where we're at at the end of that meeting and what we see happen. We had a pretty clear raft of challenges to look at across this country. Most notably, A Can't Wait is a good measuring yard to look at. I want to see where we're at with these things, and I suspect most of the public does as well. So just a suggestion, I think the natural order of things would be to take our next step and then see what next steps we need to do after that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any more hands up. So I will move, we'll move on to item 11, the regular agenda. And first we have item A, Award of the Downtown Crosswalk Safety Enhancements Project. And my understanding is that Mr. John Caldwell will be presenting that.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. John Caldwell, Public Works Engineer here with the City of Cattati. If you could hear me fine, I will proceed. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, we're hearing you well, thank you.
Great. I'll be giving a presentation on the Planned Crosswalk Safety Enhancements Project involving installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons at three key crosswalks in the downtown area as shown on this vicinity map as we request authorization to award the project construction contract. As evidenced by the annual budget allocated by the city for citywide traffic safety improvements, the Public Works Department is in a continual process of evaluating the overall traffic safety conditions throughout the City of Cattati and making high priority improvements as issues become apparent and needs arise. The intent of the citywide safety improvements budget is generally to deal with relatively small scale improvements that wouldn't otherwise be caught by one of our larger projects. Examples of a few such recent improvements made would be the installation of the new stop sign at the intersection of La Plaza and East Sierra. Or you may have noticed the new reflective yellow tape on the, on all traffic signal heads within the City of Cattati's signalized intersections or installation of audible crosswalk signals at the intersection of Old Redwood Highway and the Valpriso-Myrtle Avenue intersection. With the high concentration of foot traffic within the downtown area, maximizing overall safety conditions of the downtown crosswalks is a top priority. There are three high priority uncontrolled crosswalks, meaning they're typically not at a stop sign or a signalized intersection. Being at Old Redwood Highway and the La Plaza Crossing, there between Spankies and Bow Arrow, Old Redwood Highway mid-block between La Plaza and Henry Charles, and on East Cattati Avenue between Charles and Arthur Street. With input from the community and industry experts, we selected the Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, or RRFB system, for installation at these intersections as our choice for the safety enhancements. Given that decision, city staff solicited multiple bids and selected DC Electric as the low bidder for construction of the project. Go ahead and advance to the next slide, please. You may recognize this guy. This picture was taken earlier today. So this is the crossing of Old Redwood Highway at La Plaza north of East Cattati Avenue. This is just a good sample I figured to pull from to give a visual of generally what it will look like for these RRFBs. What we actually used to have here was the in-ground flashers, the pucks that would flash yellow. The problem with those is those pucks, those lights bust every couple months and their maintenance nightmare. So that's partly why we transitioned to the flashing beacon system as you see here, which consists of the signage, the pedestrian crossing sign up top, then the beacons and the down arrow. In this particular crossing, the signage and all that was conveniently mounted on the light standards. But the three crossings we're going to be dealing with with this project are going to be pole mounted with new poles. And the systems we'll be putting in will have solar panels to power them. And then there's, of course, the push button, which can either be on a separate bollard or mounted on the pole with the signage. So this is typically what we're going to be getting. Go ahead on to the next slide, please. With the first look here at a schematic of what we'll be seeing at the La Plaza Crossing. In this particular case, well, we've got the poles indicated by the red lines and the bollards with the push buttons on the yellow, with the yellow lines. In this case, with the poles being installed in the landscape and the planters, it's not as convenient for a crosser to reach to push the button. We have the capability of locating those push buttons wherever we want. That's why we have them on the bollards here. So these are schematics. They don't show the solar panels, the signage and all that. But this is generally what, what we're going to be putting in. And with this particular location, well, all throughout this downtown corridor really, drivers are quite distracted. If they're, they're either heading south and looking for their parking space or looking at the shops and other things, and they're not concentrating on people crossing the street. So these flashing beacons will do a great job of drawing the attention of the motorists to when someone's crossing. Or if they're heading north, they've got the traffic signal coming up quick after La Plaza, and they're looking up at that. And say they have a yellow light and they're gunning it to make the light. That's the potential hazard heading north at this particular location. Go ahead on to the next slide. This was really the only street view. These others are aerials just to kind of give a different perspective. So we generally do want the beacons on the oncoming side of traffic. So we've got the poles where the yellow stars are shown and the push buttons where the red. So that's the aerial for the La Plaza Crossing, or at least generally where it's proposed. Go ahead to the next one. With the mid-block crossing, so there's no stop sign. What we do have currently are these, sorry, go back two slides. We do have the pedestrian crossing signage in the middle of the crossings. It was shown on the street view, but it's not critical. You've probably seen those signs mounted on the ground in the middle of the crossings. So those will be removed as part of these improvements. So in this case, the push buttons, the poles are in convenient locations along the path of travel. So the push buttons are mounted on the poles as well as the solar panels and everything else. Go ahead to the next slide, please. Here's the crossing on East Cattati Avenue at the end of Charles Street. It's a wide street and it is a long crossing. There's a median island there where we're going to put a third set of beacons for the best possible visibility. And East Cattati Avenue is a more heavily traveled and higher speed limit roadway. So we definitely wanted that third beacon there in the middle. There's a typo on this figure. It says single RRFBs on the wings, and it's actually going to be back to back. So signage, beacons, everything will be pointing in both directions for the best possible visibility. But yeah, you're, most of you are probably familiar with these systems and how they operate. They do seem to be one of the better systems for attracting the attention of the drivers. You just can't miss them really, especially if you've got back to back. All right, so let's see, where am I here? So following tonight's action, we anticipate having DC Electric under contract within two weeks. Then generally anticipate a four to six week lead time on ordering the equipment and supplies. Then work would be expected to start around mid to late October with an approximate, approximately two to three week period for installation, which would put us in, say, early to mid-November by the time we would anticipate them being put in and completely installed. So the recommended action for this item is to, by motion, approve the construction contract with DC Electric as the low bidder. Go ahead and, well, the last slide is just questions and comments. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. So first I will open it up to council and see if there are any comments. So Councilmember DeLasso, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Jonathan, that was great. The more I see with pedestrian and certainly bicycle improvements and safety, the better off we all are. So, and those, those diagonal signs that are flashing that are up high as opposed to an older technology of the flashing lights, almost like bot dots that were flashing down on the ground, to me were never that effective. These are so much more effective. And I have a question that you may or may not have an answer to, but I'm going to throw it out there, not as a big surprise. But I had brought up, last year as mayor, I met with some residents off of Cypress Avenue. And these were neighbors who had small children. And when they were trying to cross West Sierra Avenue from Cypress to the open field behind City Hall there so the kids can go play at the playground or on the grass, wherever, it was a very dangerous situation. It's still a very dangerous situation. So, but I know I had brought that up at a council meeting last year. And I'm just wondering if that is anywhere to do some kind of traffic mitigation, traffic calming at that location? Because it is very hazardous because I remember parking at City Hall and then walking up to Cypress. And, you know, I too kind of had to glare at people since they would not slow down to let you cross. So yeah, I don't know that you have, it's certainly not a part of this report, but I think it's very much related to it. So I didn't know if you had any information on that.
Right, yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that. That crossing of West Sierra Avenue at Cypress is definitely a prime candidate for some enhancements, which is actually why we do have the similar RRFB system designed to go in at that crossing as well as at the Water Road Crossing of West Sierra. That is part of the design for the pavement rehab project of West Sierra Avenue, which is anticipated to go to construction next year. So fortunately, yes, that is the works for the relatively near future.
Okay, so yeah, so I realized it was not a part of this year's project, and I get that. But we do have it on a list for a future project and potentially it could be next year, as early as next year.
Right.
Okay, I just, I feel obligated to get back to those citizens and give them some kind of an update. So, yeah, I will file that information for now. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, Councilmember Lammon, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Caldwell, thank you for the presentation. Very pleased to see the ongoing safety measures. Year after year, this staff's been working on. This is great for the town and great for the downtown certainly because that is a very easily distracted place to drive. I agree 100% with that. It's just by its nature and how busy it is and the myriad things that are there. My question to you today is, as you described this system, where there are areas where there aren't existing poles to mount the signage and the blinking light, you mentioned putting in, if I believe, stainless steel poles. And looking at the diagram, they look like they might be rather tall. They look like they might be essentially almost as large as or close to the size of some of our light, streetlight standards. What I wanted to ask is, is there, has there been any thought into trying to make these? If we have to add new poles to the downtown to make them match the other standards that we've used for poles in the downtown? I know that staff in the last decade has put together a manual, if you will, of style for what sorts, styles, what materials, what are the colors, the various types of signage we use in various areas. And I wonder if that might be helpful in making this look more integrated as opposed to yet another distraction, even though it's supposed to help, will help us in a very busy, visually busy area?
Yes, that is a good question. We did, we have taken that into account to an extent. I could probably study up on the downtown specific plan and the particular pole design more. But we have put into the design some provisions to counteract, you know, that the amount that it would stand out as just a plain stainless steel pole. We are, we have spelled out a medium to dark gray powder coating. But, but right, yeah, that would bear maybe more research.
I recognize this is late to bring this up. However, we, we just didn't see this till tonight. But it was just a thought, if we're going to add more infrastructure to the downtown, even something as small as this, it should ideally, if possible, follow our DSP and it should be attractive and fit in with the other things we have. So if there's a possibility to shoehorning in this in a way that's cost-effective, improves the look and feel for our town, I'd love to see it, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Right, I appreciate the comment.
Okay, thank you. And I've got Vice Mayor Moore. You want to, go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, for that presentation. I do have a couple of questions on there. Is this project, could this project be deferred due to inclement weather?
Yes, but not to a substantial amount I wouldn't anticipate. Yeah, you may see a week or two, it depends, yeah, it's a very wet season.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they could probably perform much of the work. It's drizzly or sprinkling, but yes, that, that could be a factor as we're talking about unexpected construction window heading into the wet season.
Okay, so it sounds as if it might just be a significant level of rainfall that might prohibit them from completing that?
Right.
Okay. I don't know how tight our schedules are, but I would love to see something like this go back a little bit more and check on that design work, I would concur with Councilman Landman. If we're going to do this, let's see what we can do to make it look more like the existing structures that are there. So I don't know what that does to your timeframe or what that might actually do to the cost. But I would highly encourage that. And then along the same lines, I had a couple of questions on the placement of the signs. If you are going down Old Redwood Highway South and you're in that single lane to the right that now crosses East Catati, West Sierra, have we looked at the engineering on that with that new change of pattern? And if that would have any bearing on the ability to see these lights in, in a more sooner fashion on there? So when these were engineered, was the straight road across, after we eliminated that center lane, was that, or these looked at before that all happened or after that fact?
I, uh...
Do you understand my question?
No, not particularly. This design, I believe is similarly functional regardless of that reconfiguration we did to the the main intersection there. But I don't know, may need to get a little clarification on the question exactly.
So we said-
Councilmember Moore, this is Craig Scott, a city engineer. I might be able to help out a little bit on this one. What improves the visibility, I mean, it's an enhancement to what's there now. Obviously, we can all agree on that. The RRFBs, when John mentions it's back to back. So even, even going southbound, if the right flashing lights are somewhat obscured, the driver can always see the one on the left side rather than just facing south. The, the, each pole on each side of the street has flashing lights that are facing drivers coming from the north and the south. So even with that, that lane that moves across, they'll be able to see it. We could, I think what you're bringing up is, is a really good exercise is to be that car right going across that intersection where you haven't quite jockeyed over to the left yet. And especially if there's a bus parking that park there to see if how much of that RRFB on either side of the road that you can see. I think we can do that, that rendition just to get, you know, see if there's any kind of slight adjustment we can make in those locations. I, that's, that's a really good point that you make.
Thank you. And then if in peak hours, if we have that, if people are crossing there and the flashers go on and they are headed southbound during commute hour, do we know how many cars before that intersection gets blocked or potentially blocked? We know?
Oh, it's a span of about a hundred and seventy-five feet though, so we're looking at eight or nine cars.
Not very many. Okay. Well, I guess we'll, hopefully we'll just be able to, if we do have issues like that, try to mitigate that. I don't know how we would do that, but that is a concern. And then last but not least, on La Plaza and Old Redwood Highway, if you are going north, and this happens every single year that we've had events in the park, which of course we haven't had in quite a while, people always want to take a left off of Old Redwood Highway onto La Plaza. And they want to go down the one way, the incorrect way. Is there a possibility that a one-way sign facing east on that stop sign or something like that, we could put there kind of closer to the bus stop? Because as much as we try to educate people, they do it all the time. And those are my concerns. Thank you.
Right, thanks for bringing that up. That was definitely, yeah, that would be feasible and well taken.
Thank you.
And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, for the presentation. I really believe that these are a much better solution. Those puck lights, they, in the daytime, you can hardly even see them. So I'm really glad to see that we're moving to something that's more at, you know, eye level of people driving a car. And I'm especially pleased that you've moved to the back-to-back ones because I think that that was some of the issue with some of the older renditions that we had on this, especially when we had places like at the creek there. So it only flashed on one side and then the other people didn't see it. So the fact that it's on both sides and I'm hoping that they're timed to go off together, that was, I know, a problem at the creek for a while. So I'm really happy that we're moving to this because I think it's a much safer alternative. And thank you, Councilmember Delasso, for bringing up West Sierra. That is just a nightmare. And as Mr. Beric has told me over the years, he is the only one that stops there. I've been at that crosswalk, I can't tell you how many times, and nobody stops. And I would agree that we, with the bus stop there, it would be beneficial to have a better crosswalk there at Water Road. And I would also like to have addressed, I know we've brought it up before and it's not this project specifically, but the stop signs there on West Sierra at City Hall there, I think that they need a little bit more in the way of help. These flashing lights or whatever, especially given the Veranda Fletti Ranch and the foot traffic there. There are, I can't tell you how many people that don't stop for that. So I think giving pedestrians, you know, that little bit extra by having something like that, even though I know we don't normally do that where there's a stop sign. I think it's heavily used these days with the park being there. And I, I hope that we will consider putting some additional safety measures. I know I've mentioned, you know, flags that some cities do di- different methods, but I hope that we'll consider that. But I think that the improvements for downtown are wonderful. Trying to cross and getting anyone to stop, I think this is really helpful because those little signs in the little street, I think people just don't get it. So I think that people will stop for these flashing lights. So I appreciate those improvements. And I agree that putting one there at Charles Street is an excellent idea because they seem to respond to the one at the creek setting. So hopefully they will respond in the same fashion. And I agree with you that that street is a little bit busy, so thank you for that.
Right, and a quick note on your, your point about the intersection of West Sierra and East School. As I mentioned, we do have the resurfacing of West Sierra Avenue coming up soon here in the Pavement Preservation, CIP. It's slated for next year. And as part of that project, we are tentatively planning on incorporating the flashing red beacons at that, on each of the stops at that intersection.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Okay, so now we could open it up to public comment. See if anybody wanted to comment on that downtown crosswalk safety enhancements projects.
Mayor Skilman, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, well, thank you very much for checking. And with that, I will bring it back to council.
Okay, Mayor, if you would like a motion. Councilmember Landman has his hand up, I guess.
I could wait for a motion to go first and then make my comment afterwards.
No, go ahead. I can wait.
I could, if I can make it quick then, thank you. I just wanted to suggest, you know, I raise a concern about making sure we make a proper investment for the benefit of the downtown, the public, for the businesses there, to make sure that this looks good. And I was willing kind of to pass on that if we couldn't fit it in. But then hearing the concerns that my colleague, Councilmember Moore, brought forward about some issues about views, how well this has been thought out vis a vis the new turn lane and stuff, it strikes me, I would almost prefer to see if there's a willingness in the council to see this come back. Because if we sign off this tonight, it's an award of a project. And that says to me, nothing can be rechecked, nothing can be adjusted, no improvements can be made. Unless there's a way to make sure that we can look at those enhancements and certainly make sure that the things that Councilmember Moore brought forward, views, and ensuring that those work appropriately with our new configuration, I'm kind of reticent to sign off on it tonight. And that's just what I wanted to suggest. I don't know where the rest of my colleagues are at, but I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Okay, and then I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead. Did you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I would concur with Councilman Landman. I, the reason I asked about the inclement weather and whether that would defer any of this, because I think it does need to go back a little bit more. I think it needs to be studied just a little bit more. And I would love to see some poles that would actually match what they decor. We've gone to the trouble of putting in these lovely streetlights and now, now we've got a nice little wayfinder program. Let's, if we can, if it's reasonable and a little bit more money, I would prefer to go with something that's a little bit aesthetically pleasing on there. So that, I would not necessarily be inclined to support this approach, but would love to see it come back with just a few minor modifications. Thank you.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Delasso, you've got your hand up as well?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Skilman. I'm just wondering, and I don't disagree with the comments made by Councilmember Landman and Vice Mayor Moore. In fact, let me be a little bit more positive. I actually agree with those comments. However, I'm wondering if anyone from staff would have an idea, for example, could, could these questions be answered by our next agenda? You know, I, when you have something, when you have something moving forward, you kind of hate to slow it down or stop it. I mean, these are good reasons. I'm not disagreeing again, I, I agree with them. But I would, you know, I would hate to have, I'm just throwing out there, you know, a four-month delay over something like this. So I'm just wondering if anyone from the staff would be willing to say, you know, we could probably get this information and bring it back by the next meeting. You know, know the difference in cost and that kind of thing. So that's my question right now.
Councilmember Delasso, this is, this is Damian. So the questions about aesthetics, I think those are things that can be explored relatively quickly and what the cost would be. Probably one to two meetings away, I would hazard a guess. Craig can jump in if he thinks differently, but I would expect it would be two weeks to a month out to come back.
Yeah, this is Craig Scott. There was quite a bit of moving these poles around to avoid, you know, the existing light standards and the trees and to make sure that they're visible. So I'm not, I think those, the locations of the poles are pretty limited and they're probably, you know, it's going to be hard to find an alternative that's going to be better than that. So if we're looking at pole material, that's something we can do pretty quickly and get back to you by the next meeting. I think the height, Mr. Caldwell, if you could chime in if I need to be corrected, the height is pretty much fixed as, because we need the clearance underneath these signs. And so it's, it's not like, I mean, so the height of the poles are pretty much fixed. And then there's the question of solar versus PG&E power. Because if we use PG&E power, then we could get rid of the solar panels on top. But I don't, I don't know if there's much of a if, if, if solar is a distinct, if that's something we want or not. It would definitely drive up the cost if we went with PG&E. So solar is actually lowering the cost of these items. We don't have to do a lot of trench work. So, so I think if it's just the pole material, we can definitely bring it back at the next council meeting. If it expands into the locations of the poles, then I think it'd be probably the meeting after that.
Okay, Craig, I appreciate that. So I, I would say, you know, let, let's move in that direction. And I would also ask if, you know, there's a lot of questions that came from Vice Mayor Moore that were good questions, but if either staff was not clear on any of those or if the vice mayor would take the time to put those in writing or to make a phone call tomorrow to staff just to make sure that whatever questions you have, they understand and staff would be able to answer them in two or four weeks' time as opposed to stopping this the next time it comes to us again because we just didn't get enough answers. So I, I would hope that everybody communicates better on this so we have a little bit better understanding of what's being requested from council. Thank you.
Sure, and I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I'm hoping that since it sounds like we're going to have this relooked at, that we really do take a look at the sightlines because based upon what Mr. Scott said, it sounds like we're very limited, in particular at La Plaza, where the poles can go. And it would be really unfortunate to, you know, spend this time and effort to put in a safety item that isn't very useful because it can't be seen as well as intended. So I, I think that that's something that really should be checked out in the next couple of weeks just to make sure that, you know, this spot is a good candidate for the product that we're trying to use and that it will have the right effect. That's all.
Okay, Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Councilmember Delasso, I'd be happy to chat with the city engineers on this. They love it when I call them and bring up all these questions at the last minute. But I think we can do that and hopefully we get it back maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that and go from there. Thank you.
Okay, and then I will assume that our city attorney, John Barker, will correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is then we would just table this item until the next meeting to see if we've got enough information to put it back on the calendar.
Correct. I think it sounds like the staff recommendation may be slightly different when it comes back. But, you know, if you just take no action on it, staff will bring it back. it back in the form that they believe is appropriate.
Okay. Well, then we will deem it had no action taken. Thank you very much. I appreciate your guidance. All right. Well, then we will move on and thank you guys for the presentation and the direction it's been given. And we look forward to seeing the project presentation either next meeting or two meetings from now, whichever is needed. So thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item B, September 2020 financial update. And my understanding is a report will be given by Angela Quarter.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and fellow members of the public. At the council meeting on June 23rd, again, you adopted our fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, as well as the estimated balances for fiscal year 1920. And based on our projections of both revenues and expenditures that were reasonably estimated at our continued tenures times. So during the presentation of the budget summary, we committed to council to bring back to you timely updates on our significant revenue sources. And we've also included our statements on our balances for cash and investments. Since then, we provided budget updates. We did this so on July 14th, as well as August 11th, where we detailed out a summary of our continued sales tax receipts that were received today. So the presentation tonight is similar in fashion, same fashion, where we provided the updated information on subsequent sales tax receipts and voter-approved local revenue payments from the CDTFA, as well as that unadjusted cash and investments balances. And this really completes the fiscal year 1920 receipts for those sales tax and voter-approved local So just to reiterate, our general fund is the fund that provides most of the non-enterprise type city services. This is where the main operations for recreation, public works, administrative services, community development, economic development, public safety, as well as city infrastructure is completely funded from. We like to provide this graph as just our snapshot of how these revenue sources fund all of those abilities that we as city staff and the city are able to provide to our citizens and our businesses. Overall, sales tax and property tax account for 78.7% of these revenues. And with that, that voter-approved revenue measure alone makes up 28.4 approximately percent of that. And this just shows how vital sales tax is to this city and why we're so supportive of our local businesses and why we'll continue to closely monitor the effects of COVID-19, fires, PSS, all these other emergencies that are affecting our residents and the services and thus our receipts of sales tax revenue. So our sales tax and voter-approved local revenue update. Just as a reminder, payments are made to the city by the CDTFA approximately two months after the period where those sales tax were submitted to the CDTFA. So the sales tax receipts for April are received by the city in June. Sales tax receipts for June were received in August. So for sales tax, sales tax alone, we adopted a budget of approximately 1.9 million. And we have received approximately 2.4 million, meaning that we are overshoot, we overshot our budget by 400, approximately $459,000. This is really consistent with that voter-approved local revenue where we conservatively adopted a budget of approximately 2.1 million. And as of the close of the receipts for the fiscal year, we received 2.5 million, leaving receipts in excess of budget of approximately $455,000. In total, due to our conservative budgeting methods placed into practice using projections that were provided by our consultants, as well as our estimates from the state on what deferments they were expecting and anticipating due to their deferment program, we have, we're closing the fiscal year with approximately $900,000 more in combined revenue for sales tax than with budgeting. Because we did not allow for the deferral of taxes in the fiscal 1920 and accounted for a percentage of that revenue as to be received in 2021. We do want, I do want to emphasize the fact that we will bring, continue to bring back financial updates as this might reflect down on our budget that we anticipated for 2021. So why did this happen? What were the contributing factors? This really same factors that we were seeing previously, the last sales tax receipts. We are seeing that the businesses are reopening sooner and stronger. And a majority of that is that online retail is still moving strong, as well as the county pools. The city of Cotati has a mix of businesses here that is unlike others in Sonoma County. We are not heavily reliant on the, sorry, the restaurants and hotels that TOT driving type of tax. And we have this really, really strong fuel and service industry, food and drugs, and again, that county pool. So our estimates, so the budget was set as an estimate. And we continue to work as a team to understand and track those estimates against actuals. We will continue to do so in fiscal year 2021. It is primary, so as I stated before, the primary cause for this change is due to the increased county pool payments. And so we really want to monitor what actions those are having, how additional fires or people leaving the area might affect also those pool payments. But again, we're not really seeing that change. Construction's continuing on again, and we're continuing to move forward. And I just want to reiterate, we're still practicing conservative practices as we're unsure what larger economic impacts could affect Cotati due to these ongoing and overlapping So here's our quick snapshot of the other key information that we like to look at, which is our total cash and investment balances. It's great to look at revenue we have coming in and expenses going out. But if we don't have cash on hand in order to continuing, continue the projects that we have and fund these vital resources like our recreation program and our public safety, then it doesn't really matter much. So as of, what's that, August 26th, we had approximately $15.6 million in cash investments portfolio pooled together. And as a city in July, we had 14.2 million in our LEAF funds, which was approximately, I believe, 90, almost 92%, sorry, just over 91%. And that's invested according to our investment policy in order to earn those reasonable returns. So we're not just sitting on cash, but we're actually trying to get as much return as we can while still holding reserves in order to continue operations and be actively engaged in case of emergency or other items needed in the future. So that's our financial presentation this time. There's no action to be taken, but I am available for questions.
Okay, Angela, thank you very much for the presentation. It's great to see that we're still in much better shape than we had anticipated. So thank you for that. I'll open it up first to council, see if there are any questions. I see Councilmember Delasso, go ahead.
Just chalk. Thank you, Mayor. Angela, thank you for positive information. And I'm to make a promise to the council that every month that you update this report, we're anywhere from $2,000 to $300,000 more than the previous month. Is that a possibility?
I think I missed the beginning of your question, but yes, that is what we've received. So again, we like to keep those estimates conservative. And I think I even let Councilmember, I think it was Landman, last time I kind of was on the conservative end. He said, well, is this could be reasonable? Should we, is this going to be something that happened? But this, these are our cash receipts for 1920, so it is what we've received. Again, the CDTFA can do adjustments. They are subject to error. We have seen that in the past where they have sent out monies in advance. And so they will adjust that for future receipts. But it, but this is cash in hand that we have received for revenue covering this period.
Yeah, no, in, in all, it just looks that, you know, the conservative programming that you had done was clearly the wisest thing we could do because, you know, don't count your chickens before your eggs are hatched. So thank you for the good information and positive news.
Okay. And I don't see any other hands up. So since, I know we're not really taking action, but since it's on the action item, agenda for the, for the agenda, if we could please ask the city clerk to check and see if there's any public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Gloria, go ahead.
Um, Angela, I was wondering, a lot of them, just on the national scale, there was a lot of money from the CARES Act and extra unemployment and everything coming until, until 1st of August. Have you considered what will hap, and it doesn't seem like there's so much money now coming in to the citizens? And have you adjusted or thought of that influence on whether the estimates of sales taxes, because people won't likely have as much disposable income to, as they did? Anyways, that's my question. Thanks.
Mayor's coming. There are no other hands raised.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the public comments. And Councilmember Harvey, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
I don't know if Angela wanted to answer that, that question first. I think it's part of her conservative, conservative budgeting. But I didn't know if she wanted to take that while it was fresh in her mind or not, before I jump in.
Um, sure. I can, so I think there's actually multiple parts to that question. So the city does receive or is receiving some CARES Act funding. So that is some revenue that we did not account for. And we are now in receipt of that. So again, that is our conservative budgeting where we are not relying on that revenue. So that is an additional $93,000 that we are to be receiving in small increments from the state that again, would enhance the bottom line of our budget for 1920. We are also applying for FEMA reimbursements. It is a pittance as to, compared to what we are putting in as far as resources for our citizens and our community in order to get through this emergency. But we are again applying for anything that we can. And so there's that piece on the city as far as revenue, which we did not include in the budget, which again, will add to the bottom line to the city for 1920. And again, probably in 2021. For the citizens, as far as what I think Gloria is maybe asking about the greater economy and what impact that could have on sales tax due to maybe individuals having a much harder time going out and shopping or buying things online or, you know, enjoying going to Lowe's and working on their garden or working on their house like we have seen happen. And that is a part of our, we utilize our consultants and we do the evaluations. And they were very conservative because we assumed that this was going to last much longer. We were a little bit more conservative than even our V-style recession and had it drawn out more of an L shape where it was going to be a long leg as far as a recovery. And so we did not anticipate sales tax to come back really at all. And that's where our budgeting was based on. The only thing that was a little bit different is that we allowed for more businesses, we anticipated all businesses that could defer their tax payments, that they would do that since it was pretty much penalty free. However, we're finding that businesses are not deferring their payments to the state and thus to us. And we are actually receiving timely payments in more of a fashion than we were anticipating. And so we did anticipate to receive those, again, those funding sources in 2021. And so instead of having to wait until 2021, we're actually receiving them now. So I hope that answered the questions. And I feel like we are continuing to monitor this and that's why we want to report back. Because again, we are identifying that we cannot foresee the future. And we do the best budget plan that we can with our conservative head into what could be, what we anticipate to be a worst-case scenario and then what's more probable. Because we don't want to also not plan for our future in order to provide the safe, for the safety and health them while being our citizens.
Thank you. So I really, really appreciate these updates, Angela. I can only imagine that with the new systems that you have, that this is a lot easier. Because in years past, I know that it's been almost a nightmare trying to get an update. So the work that you do to get, get us these monthly updates, I think allows us to be extremely transparent with where we're at, where the actuals are versus, you know, where our budgeting is. And it also gives us a sense to be able to plan and move some things along as we have money coming in that can support that. So I really appreciate all the hard work your team has done to give us these. And I'm glad you're planning on giving them to us until we get out of this situation. So thank you so much. And thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any other hands up. So I'll just echo Councilmember Harvey's comments. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's great to get these updates and to see that we're on the right track. So thank you very much, Angela. And with that, we will move on to item 11C, direction to the voting delegate for the 2020 Annual League of California Cities Virtual Business Meeting. And I believe there's only one item that was presented as far as needing a review for the direction for, you could give the delegate for voting. And am I turning this over to Mr. Obed?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll be, I'll be brief. But as you recall, back in August 11th, the city council appointed you, the mayor, and Councilmember Harvey as an alternate delegate to the virtual League of California Cities meeting that's coming up. And like you'd said, there's only one item. On here is an item that was put forward by the city of Serritos. And they are, it's basically a resolution urging Congress to amend section 230 of the Federal Communications Decency Act, CDA, to limit the immunity provided to online platforms, so generally social media platforms, where their forums enable criminal activity to be promoted. And this came up for the city of Serritos because somebody, I think was on Facebook, had posted messaging about trying to organize anonymous messaging, trying to organize looting of a mall in that city. And so the city had to respond with a bunch of public safety resources to head off any sort of, sort of flash mob looting of that mall. That turned out just to be, I guess, a prank. And in accordance with the current Communications Decency Act, there's a lot of immunity, a lot of immunity provided to these social media platforms. They don't have to monitor, or they're not, I should say not legally responsible as maybe the city of Serritos thinks they should be for monitoring content on their platforms, especially when it regards to criminal activity. As you can imagine, the, the online social media network platforms that this would affect don't like this idea because, because of the traffic of public comments on their platforms and being liable for things said by millions or billions of people could be millions or billions of people can be daunting, at least potentially daunting. So that's the issue as I understand it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
Okay, thank you. So first I'll bring it back to Council seat barony. Questions? All right. And, oh, Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
And you thought we just might go over this? I have some real concerns on this. As Mr. Obed kindly pointed out, trying to get companies to be responsible for the content that is shared by millions, if not billions of people would be daunting. My concern on something along these lines is that with the ability to create apps in such a short period of time, you could have an app spread in a day if you shut down a particular site because of an issue. In principle, I do think that they, if you have hate speech and violence as being perpetrated on a particular site, there ha- it would be nice if there was a way to address that. I have a concern that I don't know that this is the way to do that. And I don't know if it raised any other First Amendment rights with my fellow councilmembers. And I know there's a lot of hate speech and I know there's a lot of things that I would certainly love to squelch. But who's going to be the arbiter of those situations? So those are some of my concerns on this. And I don't know that I'm in a position where I want to support it in its existing form. Thank you.
Okay, I see Councilmember DeLasso, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skolman. I agree with the Vice Mayor. You know, I, when I read through this sort of the first time, it was like, yeah, that does seem to make sense. But then I read through it again. And I don't know, I think I came up with more questions than certainly the first time I read through it. So I, I have some hesitation. I guess I don't know if any other council members have any strong feelings one way or the other. You know, I, i- i- if I'm completely undecided on this and we're swinging one way or the other, I can always abstain from voting, but I've never done that in fourteen years, so I don't know why I would start now. So it just, but it just didn't really sit very well with me. And again, knowing the volume of hate speech, and I don't even, I don't even know a fraction of what's going on out there, trust me, because I'm not on on, on one social media platform, but all the others I just don't partake in. So, so yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little tossed and a little confused about what direction I, I would like to give the mayor. So yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open to a discussion on this. Thank you.
Okay, I see Councilmember Lammon, you've got your hand up as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I share my, my colleagues' head scratching about this. This is one of those small things displaced in the agenda that looks something very easy and then you start reading it. There's a lot of ways this could go. You know, I kind of could be convinced easily either way in this because the general concept I'm supportive of, we're not talking about monitoring speech. Yeah, I agree, that's a dangerous area to wander into. What they're talking about here is incentivizing social media comes to establish a program to identify and remove content that solicits criminal activity. That's a slightly different thing, but it just leads you to what this, what this is really about is that, like so many things, the devil's going to be in the details. It's all well and good to recommend this to Congress to look at, but really that perfecting process that's supposed to happen through Congress would be the key thing. We could turn up with something that would be valuable. Because I believe social media has done a very good job at gathering all that information and becoming very wealthy off it. I don't believe they've done a good job of managing, controlling, and being thoughtful for making sure that their tool is for the betterment of public and society. So improvements could certainly happen. Would this be one? I don't know. Ultimately, I kind of feel it would be kind of harmless to support or to oppose either way. I don't think it'll make a difference. If something like this was to go to Congress, it would be quite a different thing in the end result. And I think we know how we felt about it more clearly. So I, I just wanted to kind of put a, a slightly different look at it as suggesting in concept, this might not be as bad as we think. But realistically, this is such a broad stroke, it's hard to know what it would be until it actually gets there. So I, I'm almost frustrated that we're given something this nebulous and asked to make a decision on because it's, it's not a lot to work with. So I don't know if that's helpful advice, but that's kind of where I'm sitting.
Okay, thank you. And I've got Councilmember Harvey, I see your hand up as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm kind of where the rest of the council is. Nebulous, that was a good word, Councilmember Lammon. You kind of look at this and there's parts of this that make sense. There's other parts of it that it feels like we're getting a piece of the conversation and we're not in the whole conversation. So what are the devil in the details that we don't understand that they're really trying to push forward here? I think that social media is a wonderful thing, but it's also a horrible thing. I think that generally speaking, it's, as it started to evolve, it really doesn't, it falls off the rails a lot, it seems like. So the, it, it still needs some boundaries around it. And as, as far as Facebook being brought before Congress and things like that, I mean, they've had to answer to a lot of things. And I think that it still has some evolution to go. And I think that this is just, you know, another example of that. Certainly, we don't want to see, you know, it used for criminal activity. I mean, that seems like, ooh, that, that's a very scary thing. But, you know, where, what exactly do those words mean? What is the strict definition of criminal activity? The example they use, they were trying to organize people to loot. Well, that seems obvious. But, you know, there are some folks in this world that would say that protesting could be a criminal activity. We hear that a lot these days, that it, that's not protesting, it's rioting. So I, I just didn't feel like I had enough information about what they were really trying to do. This might be one of those things, Mayor, where you want to go into the meeting where they talk about this and kind of understand a little bit more. Sometimes when they have those meetings and they start talking about them, you get kind of a better perspective on it. But anyways, that's my two cents.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Well, and I was looking too with the, I got sort of lost in the footnotes because it looks like they've done similar amendments to section two thirty specifically to sex trafficking. And so to prevent those types of solicitations online. And then looking at the resolution, they're looking specifically to having the platforms, you know, establish and implement reasonable program to identify and take down content which solicits criminal activity. And I would just assume, and it's probably, I'm falling back on my DA background though too, but I would assume criminal activity would just be anything that's listed in the penal code as a crime. So if you could point to a, a section in the penal code that would cover it, then that would be it. But
Those are kind of the devil in the details that we kind of need to know.
Sure, sure. But I mean, and I think, I mean, I would be interested to hear further discussion at the, the league meeting because you know, I, I'm sure that the online platforms could set up, it's got to be, there's got to be a program available that you can search certain words like looting or, you know, targeting or, you know, just some sort of search term that would help you find out, hey, is somebody posting anything that uses these words that sound like they're trying to incite folks to commit criminal activity. But anyway, so yes, I'll be, I'll be curious to, to listen in on those presentations and see what the conversation is about. Councilmember DeLasso, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just to add a couple more thoughts on this. You know, social media sites operated by a variety of entities will have policies on there. And I remember with, out of Point Reyes National Seashore, when we were using all the various platforms that are out there, specifically had a policy on our front page that said, you know, if you use this specific type of language, you know, you will be blocked from the site. And I'm just, and I can't imagine that people are not doing that. And my point in saying that is maybe it needs to be better defined what the referencing of hate speech or, you know, criminal activities and language. And I think that's kind of what you were, you were referring to. And, and, you know, the one thing is, you know, when somebody posts something that is, I'm just going to use the word inappropriate, you just don't react to it. And then maybe they lose the interest and they don't do it anymore. I doubt it. So I'm wondering if the council would be okay with giving you that leeway to sit in and maybe, you know, listen to the detailed conversation and make a decision. I think you've heard from all of us how we feel, that this could be good, but maybe it won't. Is there any harm in saying yes? Is there any harm in saying no? You know, we keep going back and forth, all four of us are. So I think, I think that doesn't give you much in the way of direction, but I think it kind of gives you an idea of kind of how we feel about this. And, and if the rest of the council would be okay with allowing you to make that decision right there, then I would be as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I'll, I'll see if it passes the sniff test when I hear what they're talking about specifically. Because, I mean, the other, the other interesting bit, but I think Councilmember DeLasso, what you were pointing out though too, like when you sign up with these social media sites, you are agreeing to a bunch of stuff that I don't think anybody really reads. But but part of it too, the resolution was talking about providing law enforcement any information. So if they see somebody promoting, you know, hey, let's go loot this mall on this date or whatever, then they're supposed to cooperate as far as, you know, providing the identification information with the person who had made the post. So that'll be an interesting issue as well because there's something about inciting crime that'll then sort of waive any privacy arguments that you could have about your information being released. And they would probably have to include that in their terms and conditions that of course everybody will just click and agree to without reading. But, but I digress. Okay, Councilmember Harvey, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I mean, it, it, it'll also be interesting to see the different perspectives because this has actually been sent to two policy committees. So it's being sent to the Governance Transparency Labor Relations Policy Committee as well as the Public Safety Policy Committee. So be interesting to hear what the different committees, the discussions are. So that even gives you an even broader perspective because it's going before multiple committees to be discussed.
Yeah, that's a good point. I'll check out.
Well, on it, and you, you know, you might be able to tell from that garner a little bit more information.
Okay, great. And then I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skolman. If I understand, if this were to come out of committee with the league, then they would send that on to the federal government for their particular action on that, if they even were to take that up. Is that correct?
It looks like.
I believe, yes, I believe it is just essentially a position that they sent.
And, and yes, it's to the US government, yes, US Congress.
So because timing is everything, I would, would be reluctant if not downright ill-conceived to see anything of this nature head to the administration at this point in time. I think it is too broad and too nebulous and it doesn't, I don't know that there's enough in there to actually address what the concerns are. So I would be not supportive of this at all.
I, I take your meaning, your meaning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I suppose, since it is technically an action item, we can check and see. Lauren, would you check and see if any member of the public would like to make public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Skolman. Just as a reminder to our attendees, you can raise your hand using the icon on your desktop or dial star nine if you're using your telephone. And I have no hand raised at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for checking. I appreciate it. So I'll close public comments and thank you all for your direction and information. And I will see what further information I can glean at the, at the league virtual business meetings. With that, we'll move on to item twelve, the city manager's report. For that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Damian Ovid.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I wanted to just update everybody on some public safety power shut-off preparations that have been occurring. So Public Works did purchase a towable generator and secured a long-term lease on a fixed generator for, obviously for backup power for primarily sewer lift stations. So you know, when the power, obviously when the power goes out for an extended period of time, you want the sewers to keep flowing. So those power sources are critical. And we've added some backup generation capacity this year in case we need to use it. We also, earlier this year, added a five hundred and fifty gallon towable gas tank that is used for, it's currently being used for normal operations. We purchased this, we actually purchased this after a rental that we had last year during or P S P S events after those fires. And we found it, we found that with the power outages, the time when the power goes out, oftentimes gas stations lose power too and they can't pump gas. And fuel tankers that normally deliver gas to us are, are hard to come by because everyone wants them to come to their facility. And Itati being a small city isn't typically on top of anyone's list to get to first. But our generators ran out of gas like everyone else. So before we actually lost power, we went out and rented this towable gas tank. And it turned out to be a key piece of our operations because rather than waiting for gas to come to us, we had to go out and find the gas and bring it back. And it also was a big help for Rancho Adobe for their, for their firehouse because their fuel, their generators were running low on gas too. And they, and we helped them top off their tanks and keep them running. So it was, it was a good, it was a good rental. And so we decided that that was a key piece of our ongoing operations for extended power outages. And then the PD and city hall generators have also recently been just serviced and they're ready to go when need arises. And our charging center is also fully ready to go as well. And public information went out on that last week. Hopefully we don't have to use it, but if you do, it's ready. Just a note on the impact from the Wallbridge fire on the city's water supply. So there was some, there was some media reports about the Sonoma County Water Agency, which as you know, is the wholesaler for water in this region. And there was some concern about, you know, if that might impact the water supply. The initial concern was a direct, was a direct impact concern because they were afraid that the water or that the fires would overrun the river collectors, because the fire was actually fairly close to those river collectors. And that would, that would be bad because if it damaged the actual pumping facilities, then it could be an extended outage for the, for the regional water supplier. Some, some post-fire sort of secondary concerns that are being evaluated right now are, are just making sure that are being evaluated right now are, are just making sure that there's no impacts from the firefighting activities themselves. So even though there was no, you know, fire retardant actually dropped, you know, in any waterways up there, at least not in Lake Sonoma, which is the primary source, they, they've been spending, the water agency is reconvening the task force to, to look into that, as well as just the general, you know, the firefighting techniques where they bulldoze brake lines and so forth, it can cause quite a bit of sediment and landslides and things like that when we get into rainy weather. So we're looking at that and making sure that the water supply stays safe. The 2020 Streets Paving Project, this is the project that you, the council had approved at the last meeting. And this is repaving of the named, so-called named streets, the Outer Hub Streets, and a portion of Alaparizo between Cattati Creek and West Sierra Avenue. And they've already started potholing and doing core samples of the asphalt to confirm the condition of the roadways. And the project is, is slated to last 45 days and should be completed in the first week of November, weather or other delays notwithstanding. So notices will be distributed to residents and businesses along the route a few days ahead of the roadwork. And there have been some concrete shortages that the contractor has been trying to get ahold of the concrete for the project because they needed for reconstruction of the roadway. But notwithstanding any extended delay there, it'll, we'll be starting construction here in the next couple of weeks. And then finally, the West School Street Pathway Project, that's just, that's underway and should be, I believe, done this, should be completed this month. And then on the recreation side of the house, the Farmer's Market season continues to take place each Wednesday in La Plaza Park from 4:30 to 7:30 PM through the end of September. And each week, there is still some good selection, multiple fresh fruit and vegetable vendors, hot food auctions, handmade goods, and more. So come out to that. And the Cattati Runner Park School District schools are back in session. They're virtual for now. The Recreation Department is, we're once again working with Rancho Cattati High School, their Recreation, Hospitality, and Tourism Program to provide students with real-life experiences. And while the instruction is primarily online, at least for now, we do expect a great, quite a bit of collaboration on projects and programs in the coming years together. This is a continuation of collaboration that we did last year. The Recreation Department is also currently planning this year's Halloween celebration. So although we won't be hosting our regular City Hall Halloween event because of COVID, we will still plan on a, on a fun and safe way to celebrate. So stay tuned. More was info, once more info was available on the, and the events have been finalized. And if you have any questions or want to look, look into what programs and events are going on right now, you can always contact Ashley at 665-4222, or A Wilson at cattatitcity.org, or of course, always go to our website, Facebook page, or Instagram. And with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. So I'll see, are there any questions from council on the City Manager's Report? All right, seeing none, I will move on. Thank you very much for your report, Damian. Move on to item 13, City Council Member Reports. So I will check and see. I have a very brief update. I attended what was one in a long, there had been a long absence between doing the Library Advisory Board meetings. So we were able to have one virtually on August 18th. And it was good to catch up and see everything that the library folks are trying to do despite the current constraints with COVID. And I even suggested that if they were looking to do a table and perhaps try to do some sale books that had been sanitized, that they could talk to the folks at the farmers markets, since ours is extended past Runner Park's August date. So anyway, that is all I had to report out. And I see Councilmember Lamond, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Skilman. Just one thing to report. Last week, I went to Laffco. Without trying to get too deep into this, there's a lot of background, but as we've talked about a couple of times over the last year or two, there's been a lot of work at the county level and at Laffco in looking at ways to do consolidations of fire service, specifically a lot of volunteer fire companies and a lot of places where the county backfills and supports. And basically looking at consolidations of way to provide better service, more cost-effective, and hopefully a more modern level of service. And at the same time, make it something that can last into the future, as many places budgeting is somewhat problematic. A discussion came forward, one proposal is being driven by Goldridge Fire, including other fire protection districts such as Grayton, Occidental, the City Subasable, North Bay Fire. And they're looking at doing a larger consolidation that at least in this proposal would actually include some areas that would go beyond, around, and indeed encircle Rancho Adobe, including Lakeville. So this is something that I think we're going to be having more discussion about. It seems at this point that Laffco staff appears to have some concerns that this may not be a logical expansion, something that Laffco generally looks for. On the other hand, there's definitely some political weight from volunteer fire protection districts in these regions being in agreement to work together rather than looking at other potential ways of annexing or consolidating. And I think also there's an interest in the county in trying to get something done as quickly as possible because the county would love, with what their budget is at right now, not to be on the hook again next year for more volunteer fire companies. So an interesting area to watch. I'll report back as things go and we'll see what happened with that. But I just wanted to make you up to date about it because it potentially could involve fire service in our region to some degree. Thank you, Mayor Skilman.
Thank you. And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up as well. Go ahead, please.
A couple of quick items. On 8/13, I attended the Santa Rosa Groundwater Management Agency meeting, and they are moving along with our SIGMA Plan. Its parts are moving along quite nicely, which is good news. And secondly, they should have pretty quickly out here the registration website for well users. They had some pickups move along because of COVID, but they're just about ready to get that out there. My Waste Management Agency meeting was canceled, so I did not attend that. And then I attended the North Bay Division League, and they had a wonderful presentation on some of the ballot measures and what's going on with the 2020 census. So that's all I have to report.
Great, thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Nothing to report out on REMIT, Rapid Empire Municipal Insurance Fund at this moment. I did want to give a shout out to our City Manager, Mr. Obit, and our Director of Community Development, Noah Hausch, on their outreach with the businesses in Cattati and what we can do to assist them during these unfathomable difficult times. And there has been some, some response to that. And I just want to let you guys know, I think you're doing a great job doing some outreach on there. And hopefully, some of those businesses can, we can assist at a greater level. So thank you on that.
Definitely. Thank you for bringing that up. And Councilmember DeLasso, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Skilman. There's been several meetings I've had with Ag and Open Space staff, but really only one of those meetings since our last council meeting was our regular monthly meeting. And there was a new member, a woman named Christina Tierney, in the Sonoma Valley, so for District One. I believe she's actually an associate planner for the city of Sonoma at this point, and has worked 10-plus years as an environmental consultant and for other public agencies. So we welcome her. There's a new proposal that the incredibly clever Ag and Open Space staff has come up with, which is called the ASAP, as, in other words, As Soon As Possible, Emergency Grant Program. But the ASAP stands for Agricultural Support and Protection. And there, we've put aside up to a million dollars in funding through this program. And the idea is to assist county farmers and ranchers, nonprofit public agencies, and other agricultural supporting organizations. So the idea is to basically through this tough time, to keep the ag community and ag lands in being very productive. So that was a very clever idea that they had come up with. We still haven't ironed everything out, and I don't believe it's gone public as far as the details yet, but probably within the month, and possibly at our next board meeting, which is the fourth Thursday of the month. And the other thing I want to report out from our last meeting in August 2 was that one of our advisory committee members, great individual who's been on the committee for many, many years, lost his home in the Wallbridge Fire. And so it was kind of a personal tragedy for all of us because we're all pretty close on that group. And, and so, you know, he was not obviously at that meeting. And I just hope that he and his wife will do well. And that is all I had to report out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up again. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, for your indulgence. Then one other thing I forgot to mention that I thought was kind of interesting. In light of how we are these days and everything being virtual, the Chamber of Commerce is considering a Zoom-type Q and A for the candidates. So coming up on the next election. So if they're able to get that squared away, then we'll go ahead and pass on that information. But I thought it might be a great informational format for people to participate. So thank you.
No, definitely. Thank you for the information. Okay, and then seeing no other council members' hands up, thank you very much, everybody, for your reports and updates. We'll move on to item 14, Public Comment on Non-Action Agenda Items. And I'll ask Lauren if you can check and see if there was any public comment on non-action items, agenda items tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
I have a general comment. My learning curve is still very steep. I'm learning a lot from listening to all that you discuss. And one thing that strikes me clearly is the respect that is shown to each of you, from each of you, and to other staff members. That's wonderful. Thank you, and good night.
Mayor Skilman, if you know whether he's hands.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. And I'll check in quickly with Lauren for item 15. Was there any information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Okay, great. Well, with that, I will make one last check and make sure I don't cut anybody off. All right, with that, I will ask that we adjourn this meeting at 9:15 this evening. I'm grateful, and I'm sure everybody else shares this, that it is no longer 100 degrees outside. So everybody stay safe, stay indoors if possible, especially if the smoke continues. And hopefully, it dissipates soon, and we can all get out there and enjoy some clear blue skies. All right, well, good night, everybody. Please take care and stay safe out there.